Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out tonight. I'd like to call this regular meeting of La Jolla City Council to order. Today is December 1st, 2025. The time is now 6:00 PM. If we can authorize for our invocation. Heavenly Father, as we begin this month in the countdown to Christmas, guide our work tonight with wisdom and unity. Watch over the people of La Jolla, keep our families safe, our first responders protected, and our community filled with peace during this busy season. Bless our decisions and the citizens we serve. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
If we could stay standing for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Schofield, roll call, please.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velazquez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochola.
Here.
Pantulia. Rico.
Present.
Just so everybody knows, Lisa did let me know she would be gone for a basketball game. For her grandkid, not for her, so. Okay, moving on, citizen participation. This is for anybody that is in the audience that wants to come up. You have a five-minute time limit. It's hard to say. Please state your name and address for the record and come on up to the podium.
Hello, City Council. My name is John Hanel. I'm representing associated charities tonight. In lieu of the drive that the city of La Jolla and various other agencies have done for us, we felt compelled to come in and at least say thank you for such a great job in supporting us. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Real quick, do you want to just basically say like hours of drop-off? And then what you guys are still needing at this point?
Basically, any food that you want to provide, non-perishable, that has to have the actual USDA labeling on it. So no home-baked items, nothing that you separate at home. We can't. We'd love to use, but we can't. Hours of operation is Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. From 1:00 to 2:45 is when we have or allow for our clients from Shaw, La Jolla, and Slink to come out and select whatever items they could use. Our store manager there is there five days a week. Till, and she's in the office on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 to about noon.
Well, we thank you for all you guys are doing for our community, and we're happy to partner with you. And we'll talk again soon. Like I said, others talks with Walmarts and seeing how they can help you with the other grocery store being down, so. If you need anything, get with that guy right there and we'll get you squared away.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
I'm David Polly. I lived at 622 Colorado Avenue, where the fire was. And I just have a couple of questions. I talked to Paul, the other meeting there, and he suggested I ask Michael here. So my question is on the crime scene. Can you hear me okay? On the crime scene at the cleanup, it's going exceptionally well and very fast. I was just wondering who authorized that and the date when that was authorized?
You want to ask them all or you want me to do one by one?
One by one, please.
Okay. As this is not an agenda item on here, I'm not able to speak to it at this time. But if you want to come by my office, I'm over here five days a week.
But this is an agenda item, so.
It's not. This is a citizen's participation agenda item. It's not a specific agenda item relating to the property at 618 Colorado.
Okay. And my second question would be, who contacted the EPA? Would you be able to answer that?
It'd be similar response.
And similar how?
That this is not an agenda item, therefore not to be discussed.
So it's the same response.
Oh, so yeah, same, similar, those are synonymous terms, sir.
Okay, thank you. I would like then to just go ahead and reiterate the FBI tip line. It's 303-629-7171. And the tip prompt is the fire at 618 Colorado Avenue in La Jolla, September 4th. Thank you. Anybody else have a question to me? I would be happy to answer. I didn't think so. We'll see, and I'll call you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizen participation? Going once, going twice. All right. Moving on to consent agenda, I entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And it passes six to zero. All right, new business, appointed council representatives. I do have an email to read on this first one for the Board of Utilities, so bear with me. This email will then get sent to Michael, so he can send it out. Good morning, Mayor Ayala and City Council. As Utility Board Chairman, I would like to provide my support for and request that Councilman Paul Velazquez continue his involvement on the Utility Board for the city of La Jolla. Paul brings an unmatched level of experience and knowledge to our board and provides essential objectiveness and a healthy critique through his perspective and awareness of the challenges our city faces. Paul has a historical knowledge of past decisions, actions, and inactions that he is adept at communicating to bring nuance to our conversations and depth to our questions to city management. I request that Paul continue his donation of time to help our Utility Board stay the course for a stronger and brighter future for our community. Respectfully, Patrick Berg, Chairman of the Utility Board. And then puts his phone number down there, too. So he said to let you know that it wasn't a love letter, it was just his recommendations. Thank you. If you know Patrick, you know that those were his words exactly, so. I did talk to Paul just to make sure that you were okay with that. Because we don't ever want to nominate someone that are like, we don't want to do this anymore. So I would entertain a motion for that.
I motion to keep Representative Paul Velazquez on the Utility Board.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other nominations? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Okay. So that passed five to zero with one extension. The next one is for Planning Commission. So the way it reads, if I'm correct, we have to have two council members, one appointed by the mayor and one appointed by council. I did talk to Tom Seba. He is okay with continuing his service on Planning Commission unless somebody wants to step off. I would like to keep that as is. If so, then I'd like a nomination.
I nominate to keep Tom Seba on the Planning Commission.
Do you want to do all three?
Oh. So I nominate.
Or do you want someone else to do?
No, I'll do it. I nominate to keep Tom Seba, current council appointee, and myself, Chandra Ochola, mayor appointee, and, I'm sorry, council appointee, Representative Maureen Ricoff on planning.
I'll second.
Okay, any other nominations? Not a last for your vote. And that passes six to zero. All right, Recreation Advisory Board. We do have to make sure that they are meeting regularly, but Damon did say that he would be fine with continuing his service on that board. I would open nominations at this point.
I'll make a nomination to appoint Damon to the Recreation Advisory Board.
I'll second.
There's a second, any other nominations? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that is six, zero. Senior Citizen Advisory Board. Paul is still trying to win Gem of the Month, and he would be interested in continuing that one.
I nominate to keep current Representative Paul Velazquez on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes five to zero with one extension. Tree Board, this one is vacant. I do know a green thumb that is up here that says that she did have some interest in serving on the Tree Board. Ms. Carly Johnson, is that something you're still interested in?
Yeah, I think it'd be a good way to branch out. Well, leave that to me, I'd like to nominate her.
I think they missed it, one more time, more.
Leave it up to me, I would like to nominate her. kidding.
We got a motion and a second. Any other nominations? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that is five, is that Carly?
Should I vote?
No, you want, I just, is that who that is?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just, mine doesn't have your name yet, so it has to be you, but okay. That's five, zero with one extension. All right, now I get to pass this off. Mrs. Harris.
All right, first is a resolution adopting a conflict of interest disclosure form for the use by City Council and directing staff to continue development of a comprehensive ethics framework consistent with the Colorado Constitution and state law.
And this on your packet says first reading? This is not a first reading, just so other than.
Right.
Yes.
This is a resolution which doesn't require more than one reading. If we remember, I don't know how much background you might remember from the last time. This would be a voluntary form, and it would just be a method of creating greater transparency.
And it's in the packet.
It is in the packet, okay. In that case, if you've seen it, I'll answer any questions you have. Otherwise, if you have questions about why we might do this as step number one, we can talk about that as well.
You know, it's just important to me that we are always putting ourselves out there as doing what's best for the city and not what's best for us personally. I think it's, you know, a wise decision to make sure that we're stating any potential conflicts of interest. In a small town especially, people like to think, oh, they're doing that because of this reason, or they're doing that because of that reason. I think if we have this conflict and we make sure that we're putting that out there, that we're all playing above board, so. I don't even, is this, did we say we were going to do this for all boards or just council?
Well, it's drafted so that anyone within the city could use it.
That's where I was, yeah. So don't feel single out as council, it's going to be multiple levels of this, so.
I have a question. Clarifying on point three, I just, I feel like maybe the subtitle is missing. It just says nature of interest, check all that apply. It is, I don't know, it just seems kind of vague. Yeah, it just seems kind of vague. Nature of interest, is it, I don't know. I guess what are you hoping, what are you looking for?
Not seeing the backside of that. Like the financial interest that, okay. I guess I don't understand the question.
I think it's, it's buttoned wrong.
Okay.
I guess, when you say vague, what do you mean?
Nature of interest. I guess if maybe somatic is nature of perceived conflict of interest or conflict, it's just nature of interest, so. I don't know, it just makes me.
You're saying the title, not the actual interests that are after that?
Correct.
I suppose we could entertain a motion to make a change, or we can cross it out since it's a resolution. It just depends on what people want to do.
I mean, it's conflict of interest, nature of interest. To me, it's the conflict.
I think the, it's covered by those interests on the back, financial, business, personal, organizational, or other, which leaves it up to that individual to disclose. And I think if it's vague, it would be vague for a reason, not specific. Because I think if that was a specific point, then you might be.
Tied to that?
Tied to that or targeted, or specifically so that somebody could not serve on it for eight months or council or something. If it was specific, it would be a qualifying term that was more to the point, but it not. I don't see a problem with it. Short story's long.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the conflict of interest disclosure form for the use of the City Council and directing staff to continue the development of comprehensive ethics framework consistent with Colorado Constitution article stated as according to state law.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Quick question. The staff that will be directed to do the policy around it, will there also be more explanation on who is expected, when? Because Paul just said, you know, we wouldn't want something somebody puts down to preclude them from serving. I'm assuming that we're not asking people to disclose or to fill this out before they are nominated or before they run. So just I think more clarification on how the form is used and what the expectation is would, I don't know. Just if there's any kind of who's in charge of asking questions or asking for clarification or just what the procedures are. I would make sure that that's part of what the staff develops for review.
Michael, to turn it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. And that passes six, zero. Mrs. Harris.
So this one actually is a first reading. This is an ordinance requiring short-term rental marketplaces to collect and remit lodging taxes on behalf of hosts within the city of La Jolla.
I entertain a motion.
Michael, did you have something?
No, no, you roll on. I was just, I was going to provide a little bit of the history of this, if that's okay. So this is something that I looked into when I first got here, because we do have a number of short-term rentals, Airbnbs, VRBOs, et cetera. We're actually up to 24 is the last number that we got. Just for a little bit of historical data on this, if you go back to 2016, there were two. Then they just kind of went up, went up, went from there. And then even from last year, 12 won it last year, 12 won this year, we're up four. So it's, again, it's a lodging tax that, just like a lodging tax that you would pay at a hotel, just like the same lodging tax for short-term rentals that are done virtually everywhere else. And again, looking at some numbers of it, we're projecting about $15,000 of the revenue just based off of that, just based off the 24 short-term rentals that we currently have. And Pam's going to be here tonight to talk a little about this, but her husband, they had their Christmas party tonight, so they are over partying at Inspiration Field tonight. That's, again, just a little historical data on it. Again, I'll try to answer any questions you may have, but Pam's really grown on the point on this since we found out we could get this done, just supply.
Yeah, I think the other points are Pam provided the form that was used to draft this that came from Airbnb. And there was dialogue at some point, previous Airbnb and VRBO, but I'm more familiar with Airbnb. They will be collecting it through their app and sending us the remittance, so it doesn't require anything extra from the city. The extra has already been done by Pam and others who had to convince Airbnb that they had to comply and do this, and they will.
Sort of. So previously, that's what we thought, is that, you know, we had, they weren't, they were, because they weren't going to comply just because we didn't have enough.
Right, that was a claim.
But then there, there was a new state statute that was passed that forces them to do so.
Right.
And so basically, all we have to do is write it into existence, or the City Council has to write it into existence, and then they have to do it.
If we build it, they will collect.
Yeah, that works, that works. So this is just beginning phases of it to get it going. And, you know, if council can get it pushed through, it's something, you know, maybe we can start collecting in 2026.
$15,000 is, it sits right now, correct?
Yes, sir, yes. And that's based on, and again, they, here's a big, long calculation of how they figured that. Again, I'm not a statistician, statistician. One of the words is, I'm not that guy. But they took their formulas in, and that's the number that they produced. Technically, it's the number they produced off of 16. And I just, I did the math off 24 and came to the little over $15,000 on a annual basis.
All right. Now I entertain a motion.
I motion to accept the first reading of an ordinance requiring short-term rental marketplaces to collect and remit lodging taxes on behalf of the hosts within the city of La Jolla, Colorado.
Have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Section 2, Registration and Licensing. All hosts operating a short-term rental within the city must obtain a valid city short-term rental license. Do we already have that policy in place?
We don't have that yet. That's part of what we're still building. This had to be passed first, I think, to give Airbnb a chance to see that we were doing this. But then I have been working with others in the administration to see that it would be an overall business license, I believe, is what we've been discussing. So it would be a business license, and that business license would then further disclose those who are doing the rental, the short-term rental.
Any other discussion? Not a last for your vote. And that passes six to zero. Mrs. Harris.
Okay, and finally, the ordinance amending the city of La Jolla subdivision regulations to establish a procedure and criteria for lot mergers and to require rezoning review for mergers involving multiple zoning districts.
I'll move approval on the ordinance amending city of La Jolla for emerging lots.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? If not, I'll ask for your vote.
Right, really quick, was just going to say this was, it's a go-through Planning Commission. I think it was on two different, two separate agendas, so it was discussed. And it's, there was a lot of discussion regarding how to move forward with this, so. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, last for your vote. That passes six, zero. Agenda item E. This is something that Councilman Ramirez brought up at the last meeting. After that, Michael did send the email back out again on trailer parking discussion. It's in the packet, is it in the packet? Options? Yes, it is in the back of the packet. This is just a discussion. We're not making a motion, we're just making a discussion if we want to do something after or instruct Mrs. Harris to write something up, change something after, we will. But Damon, do you want to start it off and go from there? Not to put you on the spot, but you're, this wasn't the recreation you were thinking of. Recreational vehicles.
No, yeah, I just wanted to see a little more on it to start with. And I knew what we had gone through, I just kind of wanted to see where we're at and where we're moving on it, and if it was, if it was necessary, you know, for us to do something. I know we had one citizen come forward pertaining to this issue in general, but if it's an issue for one person, it's probably an issue for more people. People aren't really have to come forward a lot of the time and state things, so. That was my purpose of asking the question. I don't, has it been a consistent issue or something that's come up?
Yes. I got one yes.
So I'll just, again, this was, I think we went over this in August, I believe, is whenever I first brought it to the council's attention, and then you all wanted, wanted me to send it out, and I did. And again, all I was doing is providing background information and then giving you all a few options to proceed. Since then, I have not been given any direction. And with the exception of visiting with the one lady that came to council, no one else has approached me about this, about this issue, since August, September timeframe.
I think at that time, too, we had an email from an opposing side of it that was just totally separate from that person, remember that they didn't want them parking in front of their house with their trailers.
Also, there's some background that last Christmas, if you remember, there was some discussion with the police chief at that time because he was getting questions about whether folks who had family visiting from out of town and might have RVs or something parking. That dialogue came around with, he was asking, could the city consider a permit for a certain length of time parking to accommodate some of those special needs that happen on a more, more limited basis? I think that that dialogue actually began the discussion. And then when we saw Ms. Matthews here, we were thinking, okay, that is the same thing. So it has gone on a long time, but the various options for how to manage it. Overall, when I was talking with Chief Quick, I believe that the feeling from the council was that we were not ready to administer a program that, because it would take administrative issue to pay for a permit, know where to post the permit, know how to enforce the permit. And at the moment, we were, at that moment, we were not even really sure what the policy was overall for the regular dates, let alone a special time like Christmas. Because it did come around last December that Chief Quick had those questions.
I mean, it sounds like a good idea to do something like that, but then the logistics of it gets in the way. Who's issuing the permits? Where are you getting the permits? And all of that, that background, that's where it just gets too hard to maintain, in my opinion. Not to say that we don't want to be helpful of people that have family coming down, but I don't know how you do it without creating another job for somebody.
And then there would be the space usage. If you issued a permit, it would have to be for a specific location. That way somebody just couldn't go park a fifth-wheel trailer in somebody's driveway so they want a permit, or an alleyway or something. Permits, at this point, more trouble than they're worth.
I think, but even if we've decided that permits aren't the solution, what Councilman Ramirez was asking last time is, do we have any possible solutions?
So if you don't do the permit, then, you know, Michael has the options for it. You know, you could create an ordinance that. Then what do you define? Go ahead.
I would just say that, you know, this was follow-up for me, is what it was. Because we had the option to respond to Michael with some feedback, and we got that in. I mean, if that's where we're at on it and we don't feel it's necessary, I'm absolutely fine with that. I just wondered where we were on that, and nobody else had really stated anything, so.
Like I said, this isn't a motion or anything like that, but consensus would be nice. And, you know, my thought is, at this time, I don't think we should do anything to change what we have on the books.
I would defer to Chief Quick and the officers. If it's something that they see and need for, I don't feel like, where council isn't interacting with people in this way. And I don't think it makes sense for us to come up with a solution to something that we're not really sure if there's a problem. So I would be happy to entertain something if it's brought forward by people who deal with this in the city, but I don't think it makes sense for us to try to put something together.
We have an existing code. I'm fine with that. That's my current opinion.
I think, one of the issues is listed out in your background information, number two, that the current city code doesn't have a timeframe. So that was part of, I think, what Ms. Matthews, if we remember her concern, was that she had been parking for a long time. Code enforcement had not been aware of it, or whatever the case was. So that when finally she did receive a citation, it was a surprise. So I think that certainly it's challenging because we know how difficult it is to have one code enforcement person who is trying to do everything. Mr. Mayor, your face has a question.
Well, you said we don't have a timeframe, but the first one says that we have forty-eight hours, for more than forty-eight hours.
I think what they meant was there are times where people have been parking historically because there was no enforcement, and there isn't anything.
So not no timeframe, no enforcement.
That's right, yeah.
The forty-eight hours comes from state statute. It's not local ordinance.
I'm sorry, just.
Yeah, I agree with you, certainly, you're right. But I think the primary issue that we may have with any change is trying to make sure that the public in the city is aware that this is an enforcement that we may do so that everyone is aware going forward.
I agree. All right, so it doesn't sound like we're doing anything at this point. So you're, there you go. Committee and board reports.
I'll start. Starting with the utility board. From the RO plant, they inspected the reserved in West Tanks. They had actually divers go in there and inspect them for this year. They'd winterize the lot houses. They did install a six-inch and tap on a ten-inch main and saw a new fire hydrant at fourth and Park, replaced a portion of the sidewalk, and replaced a new fire hydrant service at First and Steam. And the way Tom explained this, they're working with a potential pilot program for an RO concentrate treatment technology. That was the macaroni thing, where he's talking about when you're boiling something, it's removing hard sediments from the wastewater that it actually turns into clean water. But I don't know, it sounds kind of new stuff, yeah.
You don't have a way to explain it, thank you.
Yeah, it does, and you know, macaroni, I don't know if that was the most apropos, but that's what worked for Tom. And then with the utilities, coming up will be the Christmas lighting contest. That'll go from the fifteenth to the nineteenth. The judging will actually occur, I think, during that timeframe, but on the eighteenth primarily. So if you want your Christmas lights that you're going to display judged, have them on by five o'clock that evening. A judge or judges unbeknownst to anybody, even though everybody knows who they are, will go around and judge, and hopefully win a nice lighting contest. There was a brief interruption in service in the electrical department that was caused by either a bird or swirl, which is most often the case. And as you can see, they worked hard in getting up our Christmas decorations. That's from the utility board. I'm not missing anything. From the hospital board, Ron Hogan is now the CEO for the hospital. He's taken that position on. We think he'll do a good job with that. This Thursday will be the senior center advisory board meeting. It'll be here at the City Municipal Building in these chambers. So if you want to attend, I understand there's five people that have put in letters to be on the advisory board, so I can just.
My CTV.
Teddy, did you have a question? Did you have a question for Paul?
Oh, yeah, I did. Who's the new CEO at the hospital?
His name is Ron Hogan, R-O-N-H-O-G-A-N.
Ron?
Ron Hogan.
C-O-D-Y?
H-O-G-E-N.
H-O-B?
H-O-G?
G.
E-N.
E-N?
E-N.
E-N, H-O-G-E-N.
Yes.
Thank you.
One issue. I don't think that's right.
Is it A?
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
A-N. Don't listen to Paul, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know if you said the prices on the lighting contest, the prizes.
I did not.
Okay, so first prize is three hundred dollars. Second prize is two hundred dollars, and third prize is one hundred dollars.
As for the lighting contest?
Yes. Any other committee and board reports?
Planning committee, okay. Planning committee met on the twentieth, and we discussed the lot merger policy, which was brought forward and is now passed first reading. We also had a conversation about Connex boxes, the construction express boxes, and people using them as storage or placing them on their property, and if we were going to consider some policies or regulations around that. So it was, it was kind of left that you haven't heard a lot from the community. So now's your chance if you have opinions about having Connex boxes on property, whether it, it seems like there should be some zoning issues, residential versus commercial. So stay tuned to coming to Planning Committee. And here you go, more conversations about Connex boxes.
For everyone that don't understand, Connex boxes, shipping containers are what they are often referred to as well. So a lot of people, a couple of years ago, were doing container homes and stuff like that. So that's what they're talking about when they're talking about Connexes. Any other committee and board reports? All right, Mr. Hart.
All right, I want to let everybody know the new library calendar is out for the month. I do want to highlight on the nineteenth is the free movie day at the Fox. We have the choice between The Grinch and The Christmas Carol. Both of those are with Jim Carrey in it. It's not the cartoon or the, what was it? The Scrooge, was Scrooge McDuck was The Christmas Carol? That's my favorite one, by the way. Couple of things, gonna go out on the streets. Across the street, six eighteen, the demo should be finished up here by Wednesday or Thursday. Then the guys will move over to twelve twenty Rice to start that demo over there. Then after that, they go over to the Plaza to start work, start prep for the concrete work that we're going to be doing over there to get everything prepped for the asphalt that we will do next spring over there. Martin wants everybody to know the sweeper is operational, and he's going to get out there and start getting the streets swept. I don't know if he's going to do it himself. I would, might suggest that to him. See if you get out there and do it yourself, that'd be great. Then also, they're starting to get all the dump trucks ready for the snow this week. And on sanitation side of things, they're going to be rolling out the cardboard program here this month. So be looking for that as well. Parks, and the concrete is done over the tennis courts. They did this really neat, like, cable tension system with the concrete. It's supposed to make it last even longer. Again, it's, like, you're smarter than I am, so it works, apparently. But basically, it's a system where it tightens up, it compacts it better, which is kind of neat, which makes it last longer. As far as runway stuff that we do have going on for next year, Dibble is going to be out on Thursday to do a walkthrough to look at all the different various things we're going to be doing out there. If you remember, we're going to be replacing the runway. And then after we got that grant, we found out we were eligible for another grant from FAA that they're going to replace most of our taxiways as well. The city's going to be on the hook for, I think I reported last month, about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of the project. But the project itself for the taxiways is somewhere right around the four hundred thousand dollar range. So it's a pretty small price to pay to get the rest of it done. And then we have everything done and fresh and new out there at the airport. The parks department is also going to be installing the frisbee golf baskets. We pulled them all up off the Tenth Street course. And we're going to put them at City Park. That way, they're much more accessible for people to play. The fire department wants everybody to know that Santa Claus is coming to the parade of lights this Saturday. He'll be on the fire trucks, so come out and see that. And then finally, we've sent our third or fourth RFP for the MMOF to CDOT for them to consider and hopefully give us some input and hopefully accept it. So that way, we can turn around and put it out to actual bid. Again, this is something that's been going on since way before I've been here. But it's something I definitely want to try to get wrapped, well, at least get a plan together within the next year or so. But again, this is, yes, the multimodal, yeah, I'm sorry, the multimodal operational facility. Again, that gives us the ability to have one station that'll do buses, that'll do the trains. And it'd be a nice, nice looking facility if it actually comes to fruition. But it's definitely something we're working on because we did receive that grant for the design phase of it. Five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. So that's something that's going to be, hopefully, you know, we're going to get that returned to us soon. I'll just say soon, but when you're working with other entities, especially the ones that are higher than you, sometimes things don't always move as quick as you would like for them to move. And that is all that I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hart?
Do you mind just repeating the Walmart striping you replied to me by email? Just that that's being addressed?
Oh, yeah, it is.
Walmart, Conly Road.
Yes, Conly, yeah, right, Conly Road. Yeah, so that's another CDOT thing that we have to get there. We have to get all their permissions and their parameters to make sure it's done correctly. Last I talked to Martin, we are most likely going to contract that out. That way, it's done correctly the first time, and we get CDOT's blessing on it.
There's no striping out there right now?
There's no striping out there right now.
There is.
I think they got that done.
Oh, did they get it done? Okay, I have been out there lately, so if it's done, then cool. If it's not, then.
There is striping for the turning lane headed north, and you're going to be turning over to the east. There, I've got some striping down at that point.
Oh, okay, well, there you go then. I haven't been out there lately. They just bring it to the house for me. Yeah, so there you go. I guess that's the best response right there. Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
All right, you already hit one of the community events. Any other community events in council report?
I have a few things. Frost Fest is coming up at Otero College this Thursday evening. This will be the third annual event put on for the community, get people to come up to campus. Starts at four, goes till eight. The weather was amazing the first two years. We'll see if we're as lucky the third year. I'm not crossing my fingers, so. Let's see. Ward three listening is going to be next Monday. We'll be meeting out at the Child Development Services Building at two hundred for Shears. And let's see. Thank you, Carly, for hosting a fundraiser for Yee-Haw. Much appreciated. I hope people will come to that. It's on the twelfth. Appreciate all the support and good questions that Yee-Haw got when they were here at the last meeting. We had over sixty folks attend the in-person training, which is amazing. So thank you to this community for showing up to be ready when we need to open warming shelters. And I knew I'd be asked, so we're not in single digits, and it's not snowing, and that's why we do not have a warming shelter opening right now. Anticipating the question. That's it.
All I have is the Picket Wire. Players are going to be having Little Town of Christmas as well as the Best Worst Christmas Pageant Ever. That is going to be December eleventh through thirteenth at seven thirty PM and December fourteenth at two thirty PM. There may or may not be a cameo in that play by me, but we'll see. I know, I just have a small, small part that. I play the mayor, so. Any other community events for council?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and again, I just pulled this up on my phone here because I was just showing Marie my Saturday, what it looks like. And it's just a complete mess of stuff going on all day Saturday. So I do want to talk about the, I can pull it up here. The La Jolla High School Band, they're going to be doing a holiday craft fair at the high school, it looks like. Started at nine AM to noon. And then Let's Celebrate La Jolla. It's going to be put on at Dicky's Barbecue, it starts at three. Then there are Smores for Smiles at five. That's going to be out, I think it'll be out on Colorado Avenue here somewhere.
Santa Fe.
Or Santa Fe, I'm sorry, yes.
By the sign shop.
Okay, there you go. And then, of course, we've already talked about the parade of lights and the Christmas tree lighting going on starting at six on Saturday. Just one Christmas, like Marina just said, I mean, one Christmas sweater, wear it all day, you'll be good.
Any governing body comments? David Pauling? Happy birthday.
Thank you.
And on December seventh, Betty will have a birthday, so happy birthday to them.
Happy birthday to both.
Any other governing body?
Really quick, not nearly as fun as birthday announcements. I'll have to remember that one. But so I had a thought. A lot of, some of the items that we have presented, have gone through a committee process and have had a chance to be looked at different directions, a chance for interacting with staff, to ask them questions about things. Like, I'm thinking about the planning commission. We did work on the signs. We've done work on, now we're doing the lot merge. But I think when things go through a committee that they are better vetted and we're making better policy. I think the short-term rental, I, I'm just concerned that we just passed something on first reading that has language in it, referencing a form that doesn't exist. And I worry that when we pass things that aren't, that just haven't been through much of a process. When we get the agenda items, you know, the Thursday evening before council meeting on Monday, it's hard to go through things and really digest them. So it occurred to me that maybe we should institute, I know we were talking about like how we do business and if there's ways we can do business better, that maybe we should try to have things heard at the committee level instead of just showing up on agendas.
Let me just share one piece there. Everything that goes through the planning commission is because Title Seventeen, the zoning statute, has baked into it that amendments to that have to be dealt with differently. So the reason that those things go through planning commission is because it is specially required under our zoning code, which is Title Seventeen. So we have a special set of rules for that, a special set of noticing it up. So you do see that those get additional attention because there's special ways that those can be amended. So for anybody who considering this, we would also talk about whether or not that means that we would bake in changes in other places within the statutes or ordinances that we use. The reason that we do see those coming up in planning commission is because it is specifically required that we do so. It is not required in any other statute that amendment requires that kind of additional time. It's because of the specific nature of the planning commission.
Okay, good clarification, I appreciate that. I think my comment in general is more, I don't think as a council, we have a forum where talking about things. And I think that the trailer situation is the perfect example. We had an issue brought up, and it bounced around. It kind of wallowed. We weren't sure what to do with it. But I feel like we just don't have a structure for like, when an issue gets brought up, what we as a council do with it. So it occurred to me that having items discussed at a committee level might help with that. And I would say that, yeah, everything that was on the agenda today, obviously, with the license, we don't, that doesn't need a committee. But it's just, it's just an idea for how we could do business better.
Anyone else governing body comments? I have something that's not as fun as birthdays either. Paul took them off. Per our streets and our wastewater and water, guys, there's these things that fall off trees every time around this year called leaves. And we cannot leave them on the curves. We need to make sure that we're doing our best to bag them up and get them off the curves. If they get into the storm drains, they can cause blockages or at least restrict flow until they are washed out of the system. Now, Tom didn't go into any macaroni details or anything like that, but, uh, it does become a serious problem for not just our storm drains, but, you know, the whole system when, when we get so much leaves accumulating like that and just sitting on the curb. Uh, so if you can, please make sure you guys are bagging up your leaves or composting them or whatever you need to do to get them off the curb. Then the second thing I wanna talk about is, you know, something that was recently in the news about a big drug bust here in, um, La Jolla. And I wanna highlight that in two thousand and twenty-four, CBI in partnership with La Jolla Police Department established a specialized investigation team. And they began sending us help to help us with shooting and drug-related investigations. This partnership has significantly enhanced our manpower and our ability to make a positive impact in our city and keep our citizens safe. So I wanna give a huge shout out to CBI and to Chief Quick for making sure that that partnership is strong and for them doing the work um, to get these, uh, drugs out of our community as best they can. I also wanna say that once they do that job, they have nothing else to do with the process. I mean, it goes to the district attorney and it goes to the judge, the courts after that. So, um, our guys are doing the work with these partnerships and we have to make sure that we're giving them kudos and, and thanking them for the work that they do to help keep our community safe and to get these drugs out of our community. So I just wanna point that out, um, when you guys see stuff like that, uh, because of that partnership, it's been, it's been huge, uh, not just for La Jolla, but for the whole valley. Uh, we also have partnerships with the Otero County Sheriff and Colorado State Patrol. So, uh, we, we appreciate all our partners in trying to make our community a safe place for everybody. So, thank you for that. And that is all I have. I would like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all, be safe out there, stay warm. Happy birthday, Eddie.
Everyone sign all their cards.